We'll call our meeting to order tonight. Renata, roll call, please.
Adams?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Eddinger?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
Gookin?
Here.
Don't know if Pastor Paul Peabody is here tonight. He was the one assigned to do our invocation. I do not see Paul, so we will go to our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I don't believe there are any amendments to our agenda tonight, so we will move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, which includes the council minutes for August 18th, the bills, the setting of the General Services and Public Works Committees, approval of beer and wine license for shop stores recommended by the city clerk, and a beer and wine license for Gambrenus LLC, as well as approval of a transfer of a cemetery lot 12, block 21, from David Wicks to Estelle Wicks Dugan, and Resolution Number 15-043, approval of S-1-14.m, Lake Forest First Edition Final Platte subdivision agreement and security recommended by the city engineer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and further discussion. Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
Adams?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Motion carried. Back by popular demand, we've moved the public comments to the front of the agenda, so anyone wishing to come and address the council would have three minutes to do so related to city business. We did that just for you, Tina.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm like better than you.
Oh.
In case anybody's curious. Tina Johnson, 601 East Front, Coeur d'Alene. Doug Eastwood, who was the park director for about 100 years, it seems like, and his crews maintained our parks and helped acquire many of them. Steve Anthony and Bill Greenwood and the people who worked for the department continued to do a terrific job with all of our parks. You might not realize this unless you travel around a little bit. The reason I'm here tonight is to tell you that not all park departments are created equally. This summer, I've been to parks in Mount Lake Terrace, Washington, Walla Walla, Washington, and Stevensville, Montana. I can tell you with firsthand knowledge that our parks are better maintained than any of the others I have seen. The parks that I just mentioned have heating, asphalt trails, and sidewalks, if they're even paved at all. There's dead weeds everywhere, and all of the facilities are rundown and horrible. On the city website, there's 36 parks and trails listed. I've been to all but four of them. I went to the dog park on Atlas to look around, and I don't even have a dog. Parks can tell you a lot about a city or a town. It's where anyone can go to recreate, relax, meet friends, take in the scenery, play team sports, or just people-watch. Parks can be the backyards of many of us who live in multifamily dwellings. There'll always be naysayers who think it's financially frivolous to spend money on parks. Just look at some of the blogs and the press left by people too embarrassed by their own remarks to sign in with their real names. Thanks again to the Parks Department for all they do for us.
Thank you. Others wishing to give public comment tonight?
I'm Randy Tetzner. I live at 1318 East Oak Street Avenue here in Coeur d'Alene. I'd like to talk about taxis in Coeur d'Alene. The ordinances in Coeur d'Alene require $300,000 liability policy. Now, recently, and I believe this was through no fault of the city, staff members, but through the ingenuity and sneakiness of three well-known companies to commit fraud upon the city and its citizens. What they did was, or what a lot of these companies have done, is they'd get a commercial policy, get the taxi license, cancel the commercial policy, and then license their vehicles under a private auto policy, which in effect negates any coverage should they be in an accident because they're using the vehicle for hire. Now, while that loophole has probably been closed, what's happened recently was there were three companies who knowingly submitted insurance forms which showed only $50,000 a year in coverage. Now, somehow that slipped through the cracks, but they got away with it for approximately a year. Now, when it was uncovered, they were sent notices with the understanding, you don't comply, you're going to get revoked for a period of two years. Now, two companies complied, one did not, and they still continue to operate in the city with improper insurance, which is a threat to public safety and to property. Last I knew, someone had called law enforcement on them, but I don't know what's happened since then. Now, when people don't comply with these insurance requirements, obviously, it puts the safety of citizens at risk because is somebody going to come back and sue the city for the city failing to recognize that somebody didn't comply with the ordinance? Now, these individuals have actual and constructive knowledge as to what their requirements are, okay? One company they were unable to get ahold of through certified mail, they couldn't find their address, and kind of a sidetrack from that, I'm a flight instructor, and I'm required to keep my certificate current to give the FAA an address. Well, they really don't care what address they give them, as long as they can get ahold of you. There's a lot of guys out there crying because the FAA sent them an action letter, they never got it because they never updated their address, and they got revoked. End of story. No appeal. And so, these companies know, and those that are corporations and such that are supposed to have active registered agents, they know better. They know that they have to be able to be reachable by the city, okay? They're operating in the city, you've got to have an address. Now, it costs about $3,400 just to insure one taxi at the $300,000 level. Think of the advantage that these companies made and the money they made by only having a $50,000 policy. It's unfair competition, and once again, safety and property damage at risk. Some of these companies that weren't properly insured ended up paying out of their own pocket. That's not really a good way of protecting the public, hoping that you can bankroll something like that, okay? Now, one of the things also, these companies flaunt these regulations because they have no share of any real punishment. You send them a letter, you close up a loophole, and that's the end of it. Now, for these companies to do what they did, like canceling their policies and then going getting a personal auto policy, if that's not some sort of reckless endangerment or some sort of violation of the ordinance, I don't know what is. I don't understand why the city just didn't go out, like caught these guys, and revoke them for the two-year period, okay? Now, what I think you guys need to do is close any loopholes about a company's address to make sure that they can always be reached, and that if they're certified mail returned, that that could be an action for revocation of their license. Now, I think what really I'm trying to get at is that these people are cheating, okay? Also, I know Jerry Carlson is an insurance agent in town that you guys probably, some of you might know. He insures a lot of the taxi companies, and I've learned a lot. Like, if a company is insured with Progressive, for instance, they'll only insure that taxi 12 hours a day, and only for a certain percentage of your income cannot be more than 20% doing medical transports for people. There's a lot of different loopholes with these insurance companies that the city probably doesn't know that may not properly cover the actual company that's providing the taxi service, okay? But the biggest one are these guys sliding in and out without proper insurance coverage, and I think they've been given too many grace periods. I think they've been forgiven too many times, and I'd like to see the city go in and revoke their licenses for two years like you have the authority to go into the ordinance. I think that's fair. So, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I've been talking to Kathy Lewis, who happens to be here, about taxis and stuff. There's another meeting coming up, you can just nod your head. So, there's another meeting coming up, and she actually brought up the instance that you mentioned, Randy, which was that one of the companies was using private insurance and not commercial insurance, and I'm hoping that was addressed, but Kathy's just a real good source for anything to do with taxis, and we've been working with them and trying to get a new taxi ordinance underway for a while, and that should be coming. I don't know if we're going to workshop that with council, or if they're just going to go ahead and present it to us, but it's something I was aware of, so I think they're dealing with it as best they can.
Well, Ms. Lewis wears many hats in city government, okay? And I think it's unfair for people to take advantage of her and figure out the cracks in the system and exploit it, okay? That's just wrong. I don't know if it's a crime or not, but it's certainly not the type of honesty and integrity that we expect a company to have in Coeur d'Alene. So, if you know any of those meetings are, I'd surely like to attend.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Greg Johnson, Midtown Association. I'm here to bring you guys up to date of what we know of what is going on in Midtown from Ignite CDA. 60 days ago, we heard that the project, proposed project, was stalled. As of now, it is a start-from-square-one project, and we don't quite understand what that means. We need some clarification on that. So, as it stands right now, hoping that if it's starting from square one, we're looking for that property to be opened up to many more ideas, maybe moving the museum up there, maybe an arts theater house, parking, open space, all that. I guess the ongoing thing that we have with LCDC or Ignite CDA is the word penciling, penciling the project for the housing company that's involved, and penciling it for LCDC and for the housing company, and we're ready for it to be penciled for the neighborhood. That's kind of our, you know, we've always asked for the right fit, and now, if we want to use their verbiage, it's let's pencil it for the neighborhood and what's going to be best for the neighborhood. But as we've gotten into this, and I have a timeline for all of you, from 2007, '08 to of April of this month, and there's even an email here from Mr. Burns, the director of LCDC, in regards to that door hanger that I gave council in June, so that's even in here. And I have a packet for the press, the press is here too, to get caught up on what's going on. But it really comes down to the inner workings of what's going on with LCDC that we're frustrated with, and it's coming down to, I'm personally going to make this a campaign issue. I know a few of you are up for running for city council again, and I will be that nag. I will be that person bringing up the frustration that we have here, because it comes down to, these are our tax dollars, there is no representation from these folks because they're appointed, they're not elected. You guys are elected, and you're answering to us, and that's what Midtown respects and honors. They're so frustrated with being told one thing, or not being told all the truth, or being told something to pacify them, and really, that's not working for us. So, short and sweet, I have seven copies of those. Thank you, sir. And thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else wishing to give public comment at this time? We will move on to announcements. Any member of the council have an announcement here tonight?
Quite a group here tonight.
I had an appointment. I would like to appoint Joseph Sonnen to the Pedestrian Bicycle Committee, so I'd be looking for-
Move to appoint Joseph Sonnen to the Pedestrian Bicycle Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 And I just had one final announcement. My mother is a little under the weather, and she's in the hospital tonight, but I know that she's watching, and I wanted to say, get well soon, mother, behave yourself, and we'll get you home real soon. So, I want to give that message to her. So, we'll move on to other business. We have Resolution 15-044, amending the 2010 Trails and Bike Way master plan to add bike lanes from Government Way to Honeysuckle. Monty McCully is going to give us a report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Basically, I'm just here for a quick update. The Ped Bike Committee is working on updating the entire plan. It'll be the 2015 Trails and Bike Ways master plan, but tonight, we're just talking about adopting a slight resolution for something we can fix immediately. The street department has just overlaid Kathleen Avenue, and in the upcoming plan, it's being recommended that bike lanes go in on Kathleen between Honeysuckle and Government Way, and since they've already done it, they've done the overlay that only happens once every so often, and now is a great time to do it. So, they've already done it, they've already striped the center lanes, they've narrowed it, did a road diet on it, but they've waited to put the bike lanes in until we can get permission from council. So, basically, what it is, if you can see on the map here, we have, these dotted lines indicate proposed bike lanes, and so, the bike lanes would start here at Honeysuckle, continue to Government Way. There would be a gap between Government Way and 95, and they would pick back up again after 95 and continue all the way to Player. You see in the plan that it eventually continues all the way to Atlas, but they haven't overlaid that section. So, we're just connecting to Player, which would connect us to the Prairie Trail, the 95 Trail, the Fourth Street bike lanes, and the government bike lanes. So, there's quite a bit of connectivity happening here. Someday in the future, I'd like to see this little gap fixed here, but that would have to be done once that whole area is reconstructed with less approaches. Any questions?
Any questions for Monty? Dan?
Oh, thank you. I noticed that that's the Home Depot part of Kathleen, and I actually talked to, I think, Dennis, who's here tonight, about that chunk of street, or it might have been Chris, but anyway, we need to widen that, and hopefully, when we widen it, we can accommodate a bike lane, but it's like $1.2 million or something just to widen that stretch of street. But I really appreciate that you guys are building this master plan, and you know that I really love the Ped Bike Committee and would like to see it promoted to a higher committee and all that stuff, and hopefully, council will agree with me on that. But thank you.
Thank you. Woody?
We're not blocking anybody's parking. We're not taking anybody's parking away on all this, right?
Nope.
Not in front of any homes or anything like that.
This one's a lot easier.
Would you like it too?
I'd like it not to, yes.
Any other questions for Monty?
Just one. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Rock.
Well, just to follow up what Dan said, you know, from 95 over to Government Way, you have that little jog. What are you doing about that?
We're not doing anything at this time. We're not putting bike lanes in that one section, just because we need to wait for it to be widened, and there's too many approaches, make it unsafe for bikes. So, at this time, we'll just go from 95 West and then from Government East, we'll leave that without bike lanes. They'll still connect to bike lanes and trails on either side, they just won't connect all the way through, and people can still take their chances if they want to go through that area, there just won't be facilities for it.
Kiki?
So, was this kind of, I know you have a lot of people who work on a lot of your committees, so was this something that was like a general consensus? Was there a lot of feedback from your committee on this to approve the plan the way it is?
Yes. It was their initial idea to put it in the plan. Gordon Delwin knew that it was going to be in the plan, and since they're overlaying it, he said, you know, let's go to council and make it happen while we're striping.
Any other questions for Monty? Thank you. We'll be looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve Resolution Number 15-044, amending the 2010 Trails and Bike Way master plan to add bike lanes from Government Way to Honeysuckle.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Monty.
Thank you.
We'll move now to Resolution Number 15-045, approval of a joint powers subscriber agreement with ICREM to fully insure the city for liability and property damage, and rejecting the additional terrorism coverage and sharing the coverage procured for all ICREM members. We have a staff report by Troy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff would recommend that we enter into this agreement for the second year in working with ICREM. ICREM stands for Idaho County's Risk Management Program, and they actually let cities into that program as well. That was established by Idaho Code, and it works very well for the mutual benefit of political subdivisions in the state of Idaho. Over 930 political subdivisions in our state that are part of this risk pooling, including cities, counties, school districts, irrigation districts, highway districts, sewer districts, and many other special districts. We are proposing this as we bring to you the financial plan. The increase this year is 3.7% greater than it was last year for a total premium of $349,466. This is full coverage to the city. The liability insurance coverage is $2 million per occurrence, $5 million total. On the physical damage side, it's $5,000 per incident. This is not a customizable particular insurance plan, so you don't get to opt in or out except for the terrorism. They have brought forward coverage to the city at a maximum of $500,000. That is in the plan. If you chose to fully insure the city for terrorism coverage based on our total assets, that annual premium would be about $167,920. There's not a public entity in the state that has that coverage at this time. I would entertain any questions you may have.
Questions for Troy? Is there any question? Looking for a motion?
Has a question.
Troy, I'm sorry.
So, what would terrorism cover that we don't already have covered? Have you ever thought of that?
It would be not an act of Mother Nature.
So, car wrecks?
It would be a terrorist that had taken upon himself to do damage to city buildings or liability situations, so probably a huge risk, and it's based on the total valuation of everything that the city has. So, it's a very, very expensive premium.
Dan?
Thank you. So, say the library has a Draw Muhammad contest, and somehow that goes south, we wouldn't be covered.
We would get to our insurance company and check that out, council member.
Thank you. A more serious question is, does this cover, like, I mean, I know it's big insurance, so people slip in City Hall and they're going to sue us, but does this cover automobiles and other things like general insurance, like we would get?
Correct.
Okay, so-
Fully insured on all of the city's assets, buildings, and our liability.
Okay, great.
Any other questions for Troy? Steve?
And I'm sorry, Troy, you did say half a million is included terrorism.
It is. That is correct.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Steve?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution Number 15-045, approval of joint powers subscriber agreement with ICREM to fully insure the city for liability and property damage and rejecting the additional terrorism coverage and sharing the coverage procured for all ICREM members.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Gookin?
Aye.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried. We will now go to Council Bill Number 15-1016, V-15-1, Vacation of the Water Easement in the Riverstone West Silver Platte. This would be pursuant to the council action on August 18th.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask to approve Council Bill 15-1016-V15, Vacation of Water Easement in Riverstone West Silver Platte.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Renata, if you could read the title, please.
Council Bill 15-1016, An Ordnance of the City of Coeur d'Alene Vacating a Waterline Easement in the Riverstone West Silver Platte Subdivision, recorded in Book K of Platte's Page 483, Records of Cootney County, generally described as a 20-foot-wide waterline easement lying in the northwest quarter of Section 10, Township 50 North, Range 4 West of Boise Meridian, City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause, and providing for the publication of a summary of this ordinance and effective date hereof.
Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Roll call.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll move on now to our public hearings. We have Council Bill Number 15-1017, Annual Appropriation Hearing for Fiscal Year, October 1st, 2015 through September 30th, 2016. Troy will give the staff report again.
Good evening again. We are here to take public comments on the work that you have been doing for a great number of months, Mayor and Council. We bring for you tonight your financial plan for the next fiscal year. It begins October 1st. In it, we have a property tax increase of 1.75% that will be up for discussion. We are not taking any forgone property taxes, and we have new growth numbers. You have seen this a couple of times, so we will move right through it. We're proposing a 1.75% property increase. That equates to $392,432. We did not take any new taxes that we were eligible for last year. We did not take any taxes the year before. The year before, 2012, we took a 2%, 2011, a 0%, 2010, a 1.5%, 2009, 0%. On the average, that's 3/4 of 1% or $126,680 annually. You are running at a fund balance, which we would call the savings account, for the general fund of $6.1 million. It's running at about 14.5% of your total expenses in the general fund, including the library. Good job on that. That gives us liquidity so that when we approach the month of December, looking for a property tax check coming in January, we don't have to go borrow money, and this fund balance played a significant role when we took our voter-approved general obligation bond out to the market and received an interest rate as we borrowed money at 2.05% fixed rate of interest for 10 years. This is the driver for the city of Coeur d'Alene. Any community in Idaho that is growing is having new construction. These are new dollars that are put on the tax roll once a new property is brought in. All of these would be outside the urban renewal district. We had a very solid last year in new construction. We are proposing an increase in full-time equivalents of 21.09, six new police officers, nine firefighters. They would start later in the fiscal year. We've got a part-time person in the civilian report taker, part-time in animal safety officer, part-time in code enforcement, increase in the streets department- officer, part-time in code enforcement, increase in the streets department, one library reference clerk, admin support in the water department, and part-time. Part of this was a reorganization in your legal department. In my 15 years with the city of Coeur d'Alene, we have never put up numbers like this in growing personnel costs. City Coeur d'Alene is worth about $3.2 billion at this point in time. The county is at a little over $13 billion. Our city levy rate will go down, as we had told you before, primarily due to the fact that the city is growing and the fact that we refinanced debt that lowered our annual payments based on our voter-approved bond. All good news. This is why we are looking at an increase of over 21 full-time equivalents in one fiscal year. Please rest assured that they all don't get to be hired on October 1. We will bring them in slowly, so that helps. New growth, very significant, $827,000. We have an increase in the highway user tax of over $600,000. Combine that with sales tax and liquor tax. We're going to talk about that a little bit later as well. The firefighter retirement fund has reached a plateau where we don't have to pay in the excess that we were paying into that, legal department reorganization, and then property We are growing the budget significantly, a number of good projects in there. A big chunk of that $11 million increase is due to your general obligation bond. We're also proposing a fire station be built in the next fiscal year. Ideally, it is done about 12 months from today and is opening up. Health insurance increase, cost of living increases, merit increases, and the new positions round out the significant increases when we look at it year over year. So if you have a house in the city of Coeur d'Alene, it's worth $190,000. If you have a occupied house where you own the house, you get the homeowner's exemption. Net valuation would be about $100,420. Based on our projected levy rates, we would come in slightly less year over year. Good news. If you owned a house that wasn't quite as high assessed valuation, your property taxes would equal about $509 per year to the city of Coeur d'Alene. I should disclose that more often. Your property taxes include other areas, but tonight we're focused only on the city of Coeur d'Alene. So this is what we had started with, and these are the movements that you have been a party to as we adjust from where you began to what we're proposing tonight. And you've had discussions on all of these topics. So that's where we came in at the $85 million mark. I would entertain any questions as we bring this to you tonight.
Troy, could we scroll back a few screens? And there's a number that you had next to it that said 1.75% increase. If we could just scroll back.
The other scroll back.
So right there, 1.75%, $329,000. And then if we scroll back some more, there was another figure. I just wanted to make sure I have this correct in my head. If we go back, one, a few more slides here. So right, oh, so if we go forward one, the 392, is that just a transposition?
Yeah, that would be a transposition.
So that number there and the 215, that should be the 329?
That should be, yes.
Okay.
Good catch.
So the 1.75% number is 329,432?
Right.
Okay. Questions for Troy? Ron?
Yeah, Troy, last week when we, the council voted on the building department, was that money taken out for the two employees?
Yes, it was, sir. What we had done in the preliminary financial plan that you were a party to is we had the income offset exactly the expenses for those two FTEs.
Okay. Thank you.
So we adjusted for that.
Dan?
Thank you. Troy, a couple of things. Number one, I see that Mr. Larry Spencer is here, and he has phoned me on, talked to me on the phone a few times about a topic that's interesting to me, which is our streetlight fund. And our streetlight fund is currently collected through a fee. So there's, it comes on the little white cards, and everyone pays the same amount. But I've heard that in cities in Idaho, they've been changing that and putting that in the general fund. What would the implication be at this point of transferring that from the streetlight fund into the general fund? How would that affect us?
Right now, we anticipate income in the streetlight budget of $584,150, all of which would be paid out through expenses, and that's a fee for service. And your question would be, how would that impact us if we moved it to the general fund? We would, we would need to cut expenses in order to cover that because we've reached the high-water mark.
So that's already set?
That's set. This is already included in that. So you have the high-water mark set. So we'd either be eliminating positions to cover that cash flow if there is no fee being charged, or you go to forgone in order to balance that.
So it just doesn't, we can't just move it from one column to the other column? This, right now, it's coming out of fees.
Correct.
And the amount that we set as the high-water mark is coming out of property taxes?
Well, actually, your whole budget. You've set the high-water mark for your whole budget.
So then how come it isn't a wash?
That is a wash.
Oh, it is a wash?
That is a wash, yeah. You have the authority for this expense. But if we don't have a fee to offset that expense, we need to figure out the revenue to cover it.
So we would have to raise property taxes to cover that if that was the case?
Or cut expenses in the general fund.
Which is what you said first. Okay.
And Dan, Larry had called and left a message, and then I inquired and talked with Mike about that. And Mike, if you wanted to just weigh in just on that issue that we talked about?
Well, in Idaho, you can collect fees for service. We all pay for water. We pay a fee for sewer. Those are fees that the city is entitled to charge as opposed to a tax that's charged to everybody across the board, property owners. So if you live in an apartment and you use sewer and water, you pay a fee even though you don't own that apartment. The streetlight utility is set up the same way, and we all, property owners especially, use that, or not property owners, but anybody, apartment owners, property owners, property or apartment residents, they use that and they pay a fee that's put on with our other It's legal in the state of Idaho to do that. We could shift it to a general fund expense. Some cities have looked at that. What that does is create a tax burden primarily on, you know, property owners. So if you live in an apartment, you'd get a free streetlight. You'd get that service for free. So it's a decision council can make, but at this point, our analysis is it's legal for us to collect that as a fee for a service that's being provided to citizens here.
And then I had another question. So since you did the preliminary budget, there was projected income from the state for sales, sales tax, state liquor tax, and highway use tax. Have those figures changed?
Yes, they have.
In which direction?
Excuse me, positively. In anticipation of that question, we've drawn up this new slide that's not in the packet that show slight increase in liquor. They don't actually give you an anticipated dollar amount. We've gone in and said it'll be about the same as we anticipate this year. Highway user tax is up $108,000 from what we had updated you to. State revenue sharing up slightly, and county revenue through that same sales taxes up slightly. So we show another $194,787 in projected income through the crystal ball of individuals in all those different areas.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would favor if we have more revenue coming in, adjusting our property tax increase accordingly to account for that new revenue so that it's not put on the backs of the property taxpayer.
Okay. When it comes, I guess, to the motion?
That's later.
Yeah.
Okay.
That will come. Any other, you have more questions, Dan?
No, I'm done.
Okay. You had a lot of yellow stickies on that, so.
Yes, there are.
So no other questions. Kiki?
I don't know if Ron was first.
Go ahead.
Okay. Just can you remind me again, Troy, that the reason we got that great interest rate was because we had the 14.5% on our fund balance that is good for creditors? What was the number that most cities are, what's the sweet spot for that number, that percentage?
What's the sweet spot? The Government Finance Officers Association speaks that you need to have at least a couple months' worth of operating cash on hand. So that depends on what your budget is. So anything in double digits gets you close to that as you look at a, quote, a sweet spot.
So we would, even if we reduced our fund balance amount slightly, we'd still be way over what some creditor would look at as far as us being a fiscally sound municipality?
You could look at it that way. The challenge is what you're using those dollars for, if it's ongoing expenses or not. You've done a very good job as stewards to have cash available so that you can do different projects that aren't in your financial plan.
Other questions for Troy? Ron?
Yeah, Troy, okay, with the difference with the increase of $194,787, now, I think Dan mentioned this, that could be, from the last time we discussed this, that could reflect on, on increase in property tax, right?
Correct.
And what would that, what would that bring it down to?
As far as a percentage basis?
Yeah.
Okay. We can, Bonnie is crunching that number as we speak. We thought we'd have more discussion about how to make that up, so. We anticipate you, council and mayor. We know you do not like increasing property taxes, nor does staff, so we thought we would hear some other little tidbit right about now.
So Ron, just, just, Steve. So Ron, your question is, what would it take, if you took the 197, what would it take the 1.75% to?
Yeah.
Is that what your question?
Yeah.
I'm assuming, just doing some quick math there, it would take it down to about 0.75%.
Less than 1%.
Somewhere in that neighborhood. Steve?
All right, I'll offer the tidbit.
What else can we?
How do we get to zero, Troy?
There we go. That was the tidbit. Thank you. We've done this very well, council and mayor. That would be your fund balance. Or we work hard at focusing on how the hiring takes place and all those other variables.
So.
There is a risk, because we're running off some pretty big projections, and we have a lot of expense coming in with those staffing changes. That would be the risk analysis.
So there is opportunity throughout the year, though, to analyze, make adjustments, what have you, in the various departments to get that $135,000 adjusted for.
Correct.
Which, so initially, we could absorb it with fund balance and then make it up throughout the year? Is that possible?
That's, that's what I was anticipating as we had all these good conversations and kept looking at newer numbers and what the economy is up to, knowing that you don't want property taxes and you like to see zero on that other chart so well, so.
Woody?
Well, I'm trying to figure this out. I know it's an election year and everything, but why didn't we start with zero? If zero is where you guys want to go now, how come we didn't do it like three months ago? Do we ever consider zero?
Well, I think the whole, this whole process is a gigantic work in progress, right?
Yeah.
I think when we first started this process, we knew there was going to be a big investment in fire. We knew there was going to be a big investment in police, and we didn't have a lot of these projected numbers. With, some of these numbers are very good numbers. We didn't have the new growth number, which was, which was tremendous. So when we started this process, we didn't have these very, very positive projections. So that would be the reason why we started at the 275 number and have, Troy and his staff have worked to get to this point. So it's kind of, kind of a long work in, in process. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I love zero. I'd always go for zero. Join me, and we'll do zero together.
Zero's easy.
So, but fund balance is something that I get nervous about, as Troy gets nervous about, because it's, it's tempting. You have a bunch of politicians, and you have a $6 million fund balance, and all of a sudden, it's like, ooh. So, I mean, there was an article in the press recently about the county, and apparently they're going to be funding staff with fund balance, which is, I think that's just silly because it's an ongoing expense. Is this an ongoing expense? I mean, we don't really know where that money, that $134,000 is, is going to go, do we? I mean, that's not a person, or that could be people.
Well, the bulk of your expenses in the general fund are people. So we're pushing 85% of our expenditures in the general fund are for people and the accompanying personnel costs. What we're looking at here is that the economy feels good, that growth is keeping up, and that we're still a desirable community in which to come. The other variable would be the hiring process that we've spoken about. I mean, if things go bad, I do not hope that they do, you don't have nine firefighters starting October 1, November 1, December 1. I mean, that gives us the ability to know better as we make that final decision.
Other questions for Troy at this point? Before, because we need to get into the public comment section of our budget. So any other questions right now for Troy? We can certainly bring him back up. Now is the time that anyone wishes to give public comment on the budget. It's time to do that if there's anyone wishing to do so.
Pardon me. I only have a couple of comments. Number one, I'm disappointed that the, the code enforcement is increasing by only 0.5, which means a part-time person. I really think that code enforcement is something that, that I realize it more seems to be going on now, but it's something that makes our city better rather than mediocre. And I think that's something that we all strive for. At any rate, I'd like to see code enforcement. The city has, in the past, adopted a policy or informal, who knows what the policies are because you have yet to produce a manual, but, but the city has a policy, it seems to be reactive rather than proactive in code enforcement. Proactive code enforcement gives you a really strong city and a strong neighborhoods and protects the, the, the investment that people have, your citizens have in their community. It's part of, it's part of the deal, and I'd like to see code enforcement increased. I see it someplace under police still, which it has been in the past. The other thing that I'm concerned about and, is public art fund. I've mentioned it time and time again. I'll give you the history on it if you really want to know, but I find it questionable that they're spending $5,000 for education and training on public art fund. I'd like to know what they're doing. You do have Mason McCutten's, it was Mason McCutten, and I can't remember, the three Sails are badly in need of painting. They're terribly, terribly, they're just wiped, the color is gone on them. They really need to be maintained. But as far as, as far as public art goes, you have 100, last year, you, you adopted 112, no, pardon me. Yes, last year, wait, where am I? Where am I? Your, your expenditures this year, you're expect, you're expected to have $19,000. I'm not sure what that's for. But the total revenue is $101,000 for public art maintenance. I think that's, it's time to sunset it for a while, put that, put that money someplace else. Obviously, we're just talking about $134,000. Here's $101,000 you can do something with. And let's address the issue, please, and look into it and see what we can do. And Patty Sagretti was the other artist. It was Mason McCutten, Patty Sagretti, who lives on the East Coast, and one other artist, I can't remember who it was, for those Sails. And those are the ones on Sails East, but they really have faded. But also, I really would like to see some discussion regarding, at a later time, regarding code enforcement and the code enforcement in the cities, whether or not the city wants to adopt a policy of proactive rather than reactive. I mean, there's things in the city that have gone on for years that really need to be addressed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Question, and this would be, I guess, of Troy and, or Mike. When Suzie mentioned Public Art Fund, that's a, the money that goes into that, that's just from the building permits and everything, but that's a dedicated fund, right? You can't use that fund for anything else. Like, say, if we wanted to use it for hiring a policeman or something like that, you can't do that.
Correct, council member. We would not be able to do that. There's a couple funds in there for public art. One is the 1% that we collect from public works projects above ground, and there's some of those coming forward. And then the other major income stream is from our urban renewal agency, based on the policy, the policy that they have as dollars are collected and go dedicated to the art fund for art in an urban renewal area.
Okay, but like you say, those are dedicated to certain arts, okay? Now, another thing, too, let's see, where was it at? Okay, the City Parking Fund, 167,896. Now, is that our share from Diamond or what?
That is the rent that is received for the public parking lots that are managed by Diamond, correct?
Okay. Now, I don't know if you have, if you've broken it down or anything, but, you know, when, when the old McEwen was there, when you went in with your boat, out of town or in town or in city, you paid a fee. And down on Third Street, you paid a fee if you moored down there. Now, have you, has the city been collecting anything from Diamond on those two aspects?
We have a pay box on the honor system for launches that is at Third Street, and the pay box exists and is monitored down for the boat moorage at Third Street Marina. The challenge on the changes were the fact that the launch was not in the design, and thus we missed the opportunity to collect for launches the way that we had in the past.
Okay, that's, that's what I heard, that out-of-towners are basically getting away for, launch their boats for nothing, where before they had to pay.
So we're working on that. The pay box is up, the signage is there, and the camera system's coming forward. But we'd sure take your input. I'll be back in front of you in two weeks discussing all of those fine topics on parking.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment regarding funds. So we have the Arts Fund by ordinance, and I know in the past cities have repealed certain ordinances that have money in those funds, and then that money typically would be moved into the general fund. So I don't know if that's what Ms. Snedeker meant by sunsetting, but that is an option that council would have.
All right, we'll continue public comment.
I think Woody had something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have?
Well, going along the same lines, we could also reduce that art fund. We could take it half, put half back, put half in, and put on a full-time code guy. We're picking and choosing here, right? We don't take it all, we could take part of it.
But that would have to be changed, the ordinance would have to be changed first to allow us to do that. Larry.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As you probably know, Larry Spencer, I live in Post Falls now.
You live where?
Sorry?
You live where?
Post Falls.
Oh, okay.
To begin with, I sent the, I sent the same email to City Council and Mayor here that I did in many other cities regarding the legality or lack thereof for collecting a light fee for the city's streetlights. The mayor of Sandpoint had referred the question to the City Council, or, I'm sorry, to the, to the city attorney, Mr. Campbell, who looked it over and determined, based on the case law in the state of Idaho, that indeed there is no legal authority to collect a streetlight as a fee. Additionally, the city of Rathrum and Post Falls's attorney has informed them in their workshops that if the fee is challenged, they'll probably lose if it's challenged based on constitutional basis. I'd like to address for a minute some of Mr. Gridley's comments, talking about the legality of the city to charge fees. It's true what he said. The city does have legality to charge fees. The difference between a fee and a tax is that a fee, by case law and courts, both the United States and across the United States, a fee must only go to benefit the person who's paying the fee. Therefore, to use Mr. Gridley's examples, the fee for sewer does not benefit the public in general. It benefits the person who's getting rid of his sewer from his residence. The fee for water, the fee for garbage, all the same thing. They all benefit the person. You pay a fee to get a building permit or for a building permit review. That doesn't benefit the public. It benefits only the person asking to have his project reviewed. If it benefits the public, the Idaho Supreme Court and Supreme Courts across the United States universally have found that if it benefits the public, it must be paid for using general tax dollars. Now, the city of Seattle had to refund $18 million when their court system over there told them, no, you cannot, because a streetlight pays or is, benefits everybody in the general public, whether they're just passing through town or whether they live there, it must be paid for using tax dollars or at least non-fee dollars. So in the city of Sandpoint, they've made the change this year. The city of Post Falls is looking into it, but they're struggling with the issue. One of the things that I have a little bit of a problem with is that city councils, not pointing to this city council or any others, but many city councils simply take their attorney's word at, okay, well, that's what our attorney says. And, and often, that's a good tactic to follow. But when you have clear case law in front of you and other city councils' attorneys are telling them other things, I would ask that the city council here take a good, careful look at the track record provided by the city attorney's office. In this case, in the case of fees, not the light fee, a few years ago, the city had a street or a stormwater fee. And the city of Lewiston copied, almost verbatim, the city of Cordelain's stormwater fee. And the Port Authority and the School District sued the city of Lewiston. The Idaho Supreme Court found that you can't have fees paying for a stormwater utility because it benefits the public in general. And they mentioned right in their decision that Lewiston's ordinance was simply a copy of Cordelain's ordinance. So in that case, an identical ordinance that was copied off Cordelain's, which was represented to the city council that was legal, was found to be by the Supreme Court unle, or illegal, and the city of Lewiston refunded all of those fees. So I would ask that the city council take a different look at this. And until they can review the court cases which have been provided to you and perhaps find out from the other city's attorneys why the other cities are taking a different position on the exact same, on the legality of collecting a streetlight fee, adjust the, while they still have the chance, adjust the budget, remove the streetlight utility, and simply raise the taxes by a few dollars, which will actually save most homeowners money. It's a number of cents, but it is a few dollars, because with the homeowner's exemption, sorry, raising taxes slightly but reducing a fee, or eliminating, in this case, a fee, because businesses pay more in property taxes than the homeowners do, will actually lower the homeowner's cost of being provided a needed streetlight. So it's a, it's a wash, but it actually works better for the homeowners. Doesn't work quite as well for the businesses, but it works really well for keeping the city in the legal bounds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Larry. And, but I think at this point, the train has already left the station, so it's something that I keep asking about. But I would like to ask if, I don't know if this needs to be a motion, but Jim, can you check with Sandpoint and find out what went on with the, with the streetlights? Or have you already done that?
I have not done that, but I will follow up, councilman.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kiki.
Thank you. If, and maybe this is a question for Mike. If we find out information, is this something that can be brought back? And does it have to be an ordinance? And then can the budget be amended later on?
You could certainly repeal the ordinance and change that at any time. You'd have to adjust the budget. You know, I think Larry is incorrect. There's never been an Idaho Supreme Court case that says a streetlight utility is illegal or unconstitutional in Idaho. The stormwater utility that we created was a first. Lewiston copied it. Not exactly right, but they copied it. It was challenged, and it is correct that Supreme Court said that was unconstitutional. The, we immediately stopped collecting fees under our stormwater ordinance. We didn't refund, have to refund a nickel of that. We redid the ordinance, and the ordinance and the fees have been collected now for a couple of years and have gone unchallenged because it is a fee for service. So, again, the analysis that we've had, and I think the streetlight utility, when it was set up back in the early '80s, the premise was that individual property owners get a benefit, and it's a service, for the lighting that they benefit from as they're driving home to their own individual homes where they're going. And so there is a fee or a service that they're getting the benefit for. The trick is measuring, you know, what is that benefit? But I think when it was established, a rational analysis was put to it, and it's never been challenged. So at this point, there is no Idaho Supreme Court ruling case, ruling that a municipal streetlight utility is unconstitutional or illegal. So I can't speak for Scott Campbell. He's a good attorney in Sandpoint, but that's our analysis or my analysis.
Okay. Woody.
You know, that's what I love about this, is every attorney has a different opinion. It's what makes the world go round. I hear you, Larry. I hear you.
There is a Supreme Court case in Idaho.
Well, I don't know that this is the, is the place to debate that. If you'd like to get that to Mike, and then we can have, we can have a discussion down the road. I think, I think we're probably in the same position as Post Falls and Rathrum, where we're certainly studying this and will continue to study that. Anyone else wishing to give a comment on the budget? Okay. Guess Troy, you could stand for any final questions. You've probably been questioned out, but if anyone else has any more questions for Troy, or if we're ready to take some action?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take some action.
Okay.
I would like to take about $329,000 worth of action and get our property tax increase down to zero. And I think the way I'd propose doing that is to accept the new figures for the state revenue and to make up the difference with fund balance.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second further discussion. Steve?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to comment that I think it's remarkable that we've been able to, if approved at zero, that collectively, we've all worked together and, and accomplished this by adding as many new FTEs to the city as we are, as Troy said, unprecedented. But in the year of public safety, which I've supported all along and continued to do so, I am just amazed. I know that this is a huge part of what municipalities are supposed to do. People call 911, they want a police officer or a fire truck to pull up in an expedient manner, and that happens in the city of Cordelain, I know firsthand. So have the two chiefs back there, and so thank you for your hard work, staff for your hard work, council, mayor, for your diligence and attentiveness to this. So I would be very much in favor of approving the, the motion by Mr. Gookin and Ms. Miller.
Second. Ron.
Yeah, Troy, 134,646. Now, that will be paid back to fund balance during the year, correct?
Possibly.
What do you, possibly, you say?
Correct. Assuming I miss a whole bunch of other numbers in this financial plan, any savings we have will go right back to fund balance. But in my crystal ball, at this moment, before it changes, we would not pay it back, but it's subject to whatever variables come into play. So your decision tonight is really that 0% increase that you're eligible to take of the 3%.
Okay, thank you.
Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I usually do at the budget hearings, I would also like to remind council that we are affected by urban renewal and that it impacts what we collect in property taxes because, as Troy mentioned, there's a lot of new growth that happens in those districts that we cannot account for, and therefore we have to make up the difference mathematically. It's weird, but it, trust me, it works that way. When these districts retire, we will be getting a boost. So we will actually see a hop up in our property tax income, which may actually cover a lot of that difference from fund balance. But also, just to let council know, I mean, this, it does impact us. And it's, my guess is approximately about $3 million a year that would be coming into the city, which is plenty for cops and firefighters and property tax relief. So this is something you need to consider as the discussion centers around urban renewal and the, I call them LCDC in, in this town. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other further discussion?
You know, I just wanted to comment that this budget has taken a tremendous amount of work, and this budget is built not just for this year. The reason why we're at this point right now is because of the strength of this city. And the strength of this city has taken years and years to build. And so we need to give credit where credit is due on why we have a very strong and vibrant city today, and that's for the people that have worked for the city for a long time, for Troy, for Mike, Kenny Gabriel in the back of the room, all of our long-term city employees, as well as, you know, Steve and Dan are, have been here for four years and they've worked hard, and then Woody's been here for a long time. And of course, we got the guy at the end of the dais here, he's been here forever. And it really is the strength of a lot of hard work that we're at the point that we are today. And so this is, this is a great budget for this year, but it has only taken this year to get there. It's taken a number of years and why we're in the position that we're in. So I want to thank all of those that have put in a lot of work for that. So we have a motion and a second on the table. Renata, are we going to read the, read the title?
I think your motion is to amend the dollar amount, and then once that's approved, then I can update the title.
Okay. So will that motion require a roll call?
Probably easiest.
Okay. So the, the motion, again, if you could repeat the, repeat the motion, then Dan, is to basically go with a 0% property tax increase, taking the new revenue figures and the balance of the 134,000 from fund balance?
Is that what you have, Renata?
I will have that.
That's what I've said, yes.
Okay, so that's, that's the motion, second, by Kiki, then roll call.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Okay, so motion carried, then now, direct me here, Renata, what would you like now?
So Troy, do I have it, or Vonnie, do I have a new dollar amount, or is it the same dollar amount?
Same dollar amount.
Okay.
All right, I will read the council bill if you are ready.
Okay, we're ready.
I'm sorry, we do need a motion to approve the council bill.
A motion to approve the first reading of Council Bill 151017.
Tag it.
Motion and a second, roll call, please.
I'll read the title first.
Oh, read the title. All these rules.
Council Bill 15, oh, Council Bill 151017. The ordinance- The ordinance entitled the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2015, appropriating the sum of $85,862,812 to defray the expenses and liabilities of the city of Coeur d'Alene for said year, levying a sufficient tax upon the taxable property within said city for general revenue purposes for which such appropriation is made, levying special tax upon the taxable property with said city for special revenue purposes within the city limits of said city of Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, providing for the severability and providing for an effective date hereof.
Roll call. Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Eddinger.
Yes.
Gukin.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Move in a second to suspend the rules, any discussion? Roll call.
Adams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Eddinger.
Yes.
Gukin.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Do we need, do we need a motion to check into this street lighting?
I think Mr. Hammond is on it.
So, we're directing staff to come back to us on that. Okay, now, we have a couple of legislative hearings. We have vacation, V 15-3, vacation of a portion of excess East Sherman Avenue right-of-way adjoining the northern boundary of lots one and two, block A of the Bouton and Kelso addition plat, and we have a staff report by Dennis Grant. This is a legislative hearing, there is a sign-up sheet in the back for anyone that wishes to comment as we get to that point. So, we'll have the staff report by Dennis Grant.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council, and good evening. The applicant today is Tombstone Investments, and they are requesting the vacation of a portion of right-of-way there that joins the northern boundary of their property on the south side of 8th Street and Sherman Avenue, and that's shown on the slide for you. It's 728 East Sherman Avenue. The requested right-of-way was originally dedicated to the city of Coeur d'Alene back in 1903. The vacation of the requested right-of-way would not have any financial impact on the city and would add approximately 382 square feet to the county tax roll. The existing Sherman Avenue right-of-way fronting these parcels is wider than the adjoining lots and thus is not needed, as you can see on the picture there. Therefore, the vacation of this portion of right-of-way adjoining these parcels would not have any impact for the city and be a benefit to the property owner. So, the applicant, oh, by the way, so, for your question.
You said that it wouldn't have any benefit to the property owner to vacate?
No, it would have a benefit.
Oh, would have, okay.
Yes. And the area requested for vacation currently contains street trees, so the applicant has agreed to sign an easement for a street tree, and we'll do that with the ordinance like we did with the, the previous resort vacation. So, at the next council meeting, we'll have an ordinance and an easement to pass for that. So, that's good news. All right, so, the staff recommends to approve the vacation action per Idaho Code to vacate the property to the applicant.
Okay. Any questions for Dennis?
Oh, one other thing, sorry. We did send out 44 mailings, three responded, one for, one against, and one neutral, with one comment.
What was the comment?
I think all of you have copies, but I do have, I do have a copy here in case. Basically, what happened to the sidewalk on Sherman, and I responded that there was not, nothing's going to happen to the sidewalk on Sherman, it's still going to be there. The other concern was parking for the proposed structure, but that will be addressed during building permit stage and whenever those calculations will be available. I'm sure Planning Department will take care of all that. That was the comment.
Okay, Kiki.
I just, thank you for bringing that up, I appreciate it. And just so that I can explain to the rest of council what had happened, is this came to public works, and when it did, and we were looking at this map, it looked like a pretty straightforward and simple, you know, just straightening out of the property line. And so, I went ahead and approved it afterwards. I looked at the site and saw that all these trees were actually in the vacated space, and here they look like they're in the, in the median grass part from, between the sidewalk and Sherman Avenue. And there's also a stop sign post that's right on the sidewalk about where that arrow is. And so, I was kind of concerned and contacted Urban Forestry about that. They didn't know about this vacation request, and I didn't know whether this report was thorough enough to really have made a good decision. So, they went back and, and talked to the property owner and got those things put back on the table to make sure that there was hopefully wide enough access between where the easement is and the streetlight, and that the trees, evidently the property owner wanted to retain some of those anyway and is going to remove some of the others, but that was kind of where that came about. And so, it was a good, I think it was a good learning curve to make sure that we really have thorough information and that all departments are involved in providing that in the staff report and that we're assured and comfortable of that. So, I just wanted to explain, that was kind of the background homework that I did on it and why we were talking about a street easement here, a tree easement here for, for this particular piece. There's a really big, apparently 150-year-old maple, beautiful tree, so I'm sure there would have been some, some upset folks if they would have gotten caught.
Right. And Katie will be attending our DRT meeting, so she's well aware because this comes up at DRT.
Great.
So, thanks for that, yeah.
Any other questions for Dennis?
Dennis, I have one. There's no parking there, that's an intersection, isn't it? Is that the way it's considered?
Say again, I'm sorry, Woody.
Is that considered an intersection?
Yes, 8th Street comes into there, that'd be an intersection.
No parking, I guess, on the street there.
Hmm.
Oh, sorry to ask the hard questions, Dan.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
It's an intersection, right?
Try and remember, I don't remember seeing any cars in front there, so I, I don't know. I would guess there is parking. Okay, at the intersection where the crosswalks are, there probably isn't, but on those lots either side, I would think there would be.
Yeah, there is.
I don't remember seeing any, no parking signs there when I was out there.
You're good.
I think you're, you're good there.
Any other questions for Dennis? Dan.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure, Dennis, that I know that there's been talk about this, and it's probably something we can't talk about, but the issues on this thing were parking, that there wasn't insufficient amount of parking for whatever they're planning on doing there, and also access. The people in the McEwen Tower were concerned that the alley was supposed to be in access and that, that there was, it was going to be crowded and stuff. But that has nothing to do with this vacation.
No.
So, the vacation does not impact parking or any of that stuff?
No.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Dennis? Okay, now is the time where we open up public testimony? Is there, was there anybody?
Your Honor, there's nobody signed up to testify.
So, does that mean I can close public testimony? Okay, so I'll close the public testimony then. And then, now we're looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of V-15-3, vacation of a portion of excess East Sherman Avenue right-of-way adjoining the northerly boundary of lots one and two, block A of the Bouton and Kelso addition plat.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Miller.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Eddinger.
Yes.
Gukin.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes. Motion carried. Dennis, you're up again for V 15-5, vacation of a portion of excess Government Way right-of-way adjoining the westerly boundary of Lot 1, Block 1 of the Government Way Commercial Park plat.
Yes, vacation number two for tonight. The applicant is Idaho Central Credit Union, and they are requesting the vacation of a portion of that right-of-way there that you just described, so I won't say it again. And the location is at 1410 Government Way, and on the slide, on the screen there is a picture of that area. The requested right-of-way was originally dedicated to the city of Coeur d'Alene in the Fort Sherman abandoned military reserve plat. The vacation of the requested right-of-way would have, would not have any financial impact to the city and would add approximately 2,523 square feet to the county tax roll. The credit union has requested a vacation of this right-of-way that amounts to, it's about, you can see it on there, it says 14 feet, and that area currently contains the site's drainage swale and business sign that they're currently, well, they're waiting for this vacation to go through, I believe, to, to follow the code, to be able to put a sign, a new sign in there. So, the vacation of the right-of-way would, let's see, would place a swale sign entirely in that subject property and bring it into code ordinance. So, the area that's requested also contains street trees. I believe they are flowering pear. The applicant has agreed to sign the easement and, and the agreement for the street trees for the described property. So, staff recommends to approve the vacation action per Idaho Code and to vacate the property to the applicant. I will entertain some questions if you'd like.
Questions for Dennis?
Tell us the kind of graphs that's, oh, question? Dan, jump.
We're just going to have a comment, which is, when this first came to us, I was concerned because I drive past there a lot and I saw that it was all dug up. And I'm like, you know, are they building something there before it was even vacated? And it turns out, they replaced the swale and planted the new lovely flowering pears. And it actually looks really nice if you've been by it. They did a super job, so, good for them.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Dennis? Okay, we will once again open up public testimony. Anything on the list?
Surprisingly, Your Honor, there isn't a single person who's to testify on this exciting vacation.
Okay, so we've opened public testimony, now we'll close that and we'll look for a...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of V 15-5, vacation of a portion of excess Government Way right-of-way adjoining the western boundary of Lot 1, Block 1 of Government Way Commercial Park plat.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McEvers.
Yes.
Eddinger.
Yes.
Gukin.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion carried, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. There's got some anxious people over there.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.